Okay, good evening. I'm Nina Rosamondo, President of the League of Women Voters, South County. Would you all please stand and we will recite with me, please, the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On behalf of the League, I'd like to welcome you to the first of the League's Meet the Candidates nights for 2018. There are a lot of people to thank. First, I want to thank you, the audience here at Narragansett Town Hall, and the candidates for school committee, and thanks to our viewers on Cox Channel 17 and Verizon Channel 28. One of the most important duties we have as citizens is to learn about the issues and the candidates in each election so we can make informed choices. If you find a forum like this is an essential part of your election decisions, please consider joining the League, their forums in the back, and help provide your community with a nonpartisan voter education and advocacy for open and accountable government. I would like to thank many people for helping with this forum, the Legal Women Voters Rhode Island Education Fund for providing the funding, the town of Narragansett for the use of the hall and the council chambers, and the staff at the Narragansett Town Hall for their help and cooperation. Many thanks to my fellow members of the Legal Women Voters, South County, who have worked many hours planning this event. Thanks to the Westerly Public Access Television Studio, PEG RI TV for handling the live broadcast and the frequent rebroadcasts of this program. And lastly, thanks to all the local media covering this forum. The League of South County's website will have links to the forum videos later. The League is open to both men and women, I hope you know that. There are membership materials on that table in the back by the door, along with other voter information. Democracy works only when citizens participate in the process. And not on my notes, I want to say, we had many citizens from your community and other communities submit questions to the League this year, which means they're engaged with the process. However, forums like this can easily be a lost resource to Narragansett if citizens are only spectators in the process. In fact, the reality is unless some residents of Narragansett join our League, we will not be able to put on these forums in 2020. So talk to a League member tonight, consider attending a monthly meeting, learn more. Now, we're here tonight to ask questions of these candidates and to listen respectfully to each of them as they discuss issues important to the future of Narragansett and Rhode Island. We appreciate your voter interest and enthusiasm, but please, hold your applause and refrain from reacting to the candidates' answers. This is a nonpartisan forum. I've thanked a lot of people, I've welcomed a lot of people. So last but not least, I would particularly like to welcome and thank our moderator, Nancy Burrows. Nancy is a distinguished former League member who has been active in civic affairs in South Kingston, too numerous to mention, since moving to Rhode Island in the 1980s. So now, to our distinguished moderator Nancy Burrows and our candidates.
Good evening. The candidates have drawn lots to determine which order they are seated in. There will be no opening statements this time, and there will be closing statements, one-minute closing statements, and they will be done in the order in which the candidates are seated. We will be asking two kinds of questions, one or one-minute questions. Each of those will be, each question will be directed to two candidates and then to three candidates, because we have an odd number tonight unexpectedly. So, all candidates will be asked one question before any candidate is asked a second question, and so on through each round. And so all candidates will be asked the same number of questions. And the order in which questions are asked is random. In addition, each candidate has been given two colored index cards, which are wild cards. A candidate may use a wild card to respond to any question which has not been directed to him or her. More than one candidate may use a wild card on any question. However, once a candidate has used their two wild cards, he or she may only respond to questions directed to him or her. In a candidate's closing statement, issues or questions not answered during the forum may be addressed. There will also be a series of lightning round questions, which require only a yes-or-no answer, and each candidate will be given just 10 seconds to elaborate beyond a simple yes or no. So, we will start. The first question will be directed to Rebecca Durkin and Tammy McNeese. Okay. If you are an incumbent candidate, tell us what actions taken by the school committee this past term made you the right person to be elected for the office? If you are a non-incumbent candidate, what makes you the right person for this office?
So Rebecca Durkin goes first?
Yes.
Okay. So, thank you very much for allowing me to be here tonight. So if I may, I would just like to refer to the Narragansett School System District Development Plan. That's a plan that we worked on last year, which has enabled us to move forward with specific goals and measures. So I personally have been working on the Health and Wellness Committee, and that's something that I feel is very important to continue on with. So, we have three subgroups. We have mental health, and we have, we have physical education, and we have school start times, and we have a few other things that we've been working on. So, I'd like to keep going with that.
Okay. So Tammy McNeese?
Hi, good evening, everyone. I just want to thank the League for hosting this tonight, we really appreciate that. So, when I started my term two years ago, we transitioned our new superintendent, Dr. Peter Cummings, and I really think that that has been a big part of our term for the past two years. He has been a wonderful asset to our school district, as Becky said, you know, working on our district strategic plan. Dr. Cummings was a big part of that, developing that with our stakeholders. And probably, some of the priorities that we focused on this term have definitely been to improve school safety, and that's through facility improvements, as well as the addition of a second school resource officer. Our school facilities, we've made significant improvements in our capital improvements as well, renovations to the HVAC system at the peer school. I serve on the school building committee. And I think that, you know, the focus for the next term really is kind of continuing the work that we've been doing, and really looking at our career and tech programs that is increasing our number of tuition students. This past term, we started a new career and tech program, a new plumbing program. Thank you.
Okay. The next question, oh sure.
A little unorthodox to be throwing up a card this early, but seeing as I am the only non-incumbent, good evening, everyone. My name is Alexander Menzies, and it is an honor to be running in my first election for the Narragansett School Committee. I'm also honored to be sitting up here with the current members of the school committee who have all done incredible work on behalf of the Narragansett School System. I had the privilege of growing up in Narragansett, attending all three public schools. I graduated from the high school in 2011. I then took the quality skills that I obtained and went on to earn my BA in Political Science from URI, and just recently graduated from Boston College last year with my master's degree. I know that Narragansett prepared me to embrace opportunity and to learn from my mistakes. It is my hope to be able to share what I have learned as a member of the school committee to ensure that everyone who leaves the Narragansett School System is prepared to embrace opportunity and face the world with confidence, and I know I can contribute to this school committee. Thank you.
Okay. So the next question will be directed to, again, Alexander Menzies, Diana Nobles, and Justin Scanion. So, I guess, given the order I read them, we'll start with Alexander again, but here's the question. If you are a non-incumbent candidate, what concerns influence why you want to be on the school committee, and what skills can you bring to address them? If you are an incumbent candidate, name the concerns you address during your service, and were your skills sufficient to implement the changes you wanted?
Well, this is a great question, being the only non-incumbent on the stage, but I was really concerned with just making sure that all the decisions that were made on the committee were well-thought-out and well-budgeted, the athletic complex, the agri-science buildings, and just making sure, you know, the declining trend in student enrollment, but it has started to level off, and it looks like the trend is starting to go back up a little bit. But those are some of the concerns that I was worried about. But since I'm a recent college graduate and have started to go into the workforce, I bring a unique student's perspective that I know I can add to the committee and offer up my concerns, and hopefully some remedies to several of these issues.
Okay. Diane Nobles?
Well, I don't think there's a school committee member here in Narragansett or anywhere in our state, or perhaps even across our country, who doesn't have in the back of their mind the concern for the safety and security of our students. And so, this has been very my priority for our school committee, and I think we've all brought resources and suggestions and ideas in terms of hardening our school, but not just through facilities, changes, equipment changes, and technology changes, but also through preventative programs such as Alice Training with all our administrators and staff and students, Sandy Hook Promise Program, which we instituted this year, and also changes, procedural changes in our schools for coming and going, entering, leaving, and so forth. So, that's been my main concern.
And Justin Scanion?
Yes. So, the question being, like, what do you think I brought to the, to the committee during my service for the last two years? I've been a member of the Subcommittee for Technology, I've been a member of the Technology Subcommittee. I feel, though, I've contributed there, using my background and as an engineer. And we've helped develop a plan to carry the schools forward with their technology progress. I've also felt I've been very helpful, everyone, everyone on the committee, last couple of years, has really pulled together and worked hard to get a lot of stuff done, Alice Training, that was just brought by Diane, new building improvements, HVAC system with the, like, middle school, which was on the building committee for that. There, I think, I also, I'm the youngest member on this board currently, Alex is not currently a member. So, I felt like I brought the student's perspective also to that, as one of the more recent graduates from the Narragansett School System.
The third question will be directed to Tammy McNeese, Alexander Menzies, and Diane Nobles. And the question is, can you explain your own experience, if any, with public education, and how it may influence your work as a committee member? So, starting with Tammy McNeese.
Thank you. So I am a very proud parent of two Narragansett High School graduates. My two daughters went through all three schools in Narragansett, very proud of my children and the experience that they had. I have been in education for the past 20 years. I was a teacher for 14 years, a special education teacher, and I'm currently an assistant principal in a nearby district. I have two master's degrees in education, so I have a lot of educational experience, but also, you know, day-to-day, I am in a school and understanding the challenges as an administrator that schools face on a daily basis. I work closely, you know, with our school committee and superintendent, you know, so I bring to the table a lot of relevant experience besides, you know, knowledge of policy and budgeting, and then also, I have been the chair of the committee for the past 10 years. So, bring a lot of experience that I hope to share and am proud of. Thank you.
Okay. Alexander Menzies?
Well, I guess I can echo some of my earlier statements by saying that I am a child of the school system here in Narragansett. I attended the elementary school, the pure middle school, and the high school. I did the senior project, I know the concerns, the issues that came with it, took the standardized tests, I participated in chorus, I played the violin, experienced the excitement and the adrenaline of transitioning from one school to the next, and the fear of going to school on the first day. So, as a recent graduate and recent graduate from college, I have a fresh perspective on the most recent dealings with public education, and I know I can empathize with the administrators, the teachers, and the students, and the issues that they have going on.
Okay. So Diane Nobles?
Well, I raised three sons, who are graduates, not of the Narragansett School System, but we were living in Texas at the time, so they're graduates of schools in Texas. Myself, I've had a career in education. I just recently retired from Community College of Rhode Island, and I have a doctorate in Educational Human Resource Development. And throughout my career, I worked with Career and Technical Education, which is an area that our school committee is moving into by adding new programs in the Career and Technical Education area to our high school. And so I bring my professional experience and also my parental experience.
Okay. Rebecca Durkin?
So, I am also the proud parent of three children who have been through the school system. Two have graduated, and one is currently in the school system. So, I feel as though that has given me a good base for understanding what it's like to be a parent going through the process with Narragansett. I've also been involved in the various organizations that parents can be involved in, such as the PTA, and was helpful in building the athletic complex. I've been on the Narragansett Prevention Partnership, and so that's why I chose to continue that on by being involved with the school committee. I wanted to help the new superintendent transition in two years ago, and as Tammy said, that to me was one of the most important things, to keep the momentum going and to continue to make our schools better.
Okay. Justin?
Thank you. So, public education has influenced me, like, my whole life. This is, it, what made me become the person I am today. I went through Narragansett School System, I graduated from URI, and then my job at Navitech for the last several years has been involved research and development, using resources of public universities, like University of Michigan pops out. So, all that, and you can see the influence from this, from just public education in general, it really is a massive benefit to all of society. It's the closest thing I'll say to a Magic MacGuffin that you can get to cure a lot of ills. And this, and this knowledge of, like, giving it to everyone and raising all boats is why I'm so proud to serve on the school committee, and proud just to try to be part of the educational process.
Thank you. Okay. Right. Okay. So, the next question is directed to Rebecca Durkin and Justin Scanion. What do you think is the most pressing issue for the Narragansett School System?
Well, I think that, as two of my fellow committee members have mentioned, what happened last year with the school violence really brought into our immediate concern, the school safety issue. So, for us, that became job number one, and that was to secure our schools in many ways, shapes, and forms, whether it be through creating new swipe cards for the teachers, creating all the new different types of security measures that we could take, but also, most important as well, is to know the whole child and to help understand the different types of mental illnesses that can happen with kids our, this, at this age. So, we're also making sure that our social and emotional learning is taken care of as well.
Justin?
So, the most important issue, I think I agree with Becky on this one, because it is, the one I've clearly seen the most emotional response from the community from is the issue of school safety from mass shootings, and to pile on that is also drug use in schools. Those issues, I feel, go hand-in-hand under an umbrella of what we've been trying to accomplish with the Narragansett School District, of just wellness for students. We've all on the firm belief that they are, that you cannot educate kids unless they're well. Then that includes being fed, they feel safe, and we get, so we're going to strive to ensure that safety. We've taken measures that Becky has lined out about, you know, school locks, more cameras, that sort of stuff. And we have school counselors to address the mental issues. And that has always been our thought. It didn't start with Parkland, we were looking at that beforehand, we just realized it was time to really move forward.
Great. Thank you. Okay. So, question five is directed to Rebecca Durkin, Tammy McNeese, and Justin Scanion. Narragansett has sought to increase the number of out-of-district students in recent years as local enrollment and young families decline. Specifically, how do you propose to encourage families to keep local children in the Narragansett School System through the high school years, and in addition, encourage a greater number of tuition-paying out-of-district students? So I guess Rebecca Durkin?
That's a great question. Thank you. This year has really been an amazing experience for me personally to see the proactive measures that have happened, starting from the youngest all the way through the high school. What happened with the youngest sector is we started a preschool, a full-day, all-inclusive preschool. And that increased our enrollment for the younger sector quite a bit. We went from 50 to 72, and we actually had to shut off the enrollment because it was at full capacity. So, our thoughts being there, that if we were to start enrolling the kids and giving them an option for full-day pre-K early, they would stay with us. In addition to that, on the other end, we've started great new programs, a plumbing program. Thank you.
Okay. Tammy McNeese?
Hi, again. So, it really, you know, to kind of piggyback off of what Becky said, we're, Narragansett is facing the same challenges as the other school districts in the southern part of the state, where the birth rate is decreasing at a pretty alarming rate. And so, you know, as Becky said, we've been doing kind of like two important things to make sure that we're retaining the kids that we have, and we're attracting as many new kids. So Becky talked about the full-day preschool, that's something that our families have been asking for, for a long time. So by having that, we're hoping to increase the number of preschool kids, which will increase our kindergarten size, which will increase enrollment at the lower levels and trickle through. We also have focused a lot on marketing and celebrating all the wonderful things that we're doing. So two years ago, we hired a part-time marketing consultant who's been really working hard to promote our school district, and expanding our career and tech options. As we know, students can tuition into many other public schools in the area, and we want to be competitive with that, and that's been a big part of our enrollment increase at the high school. Thank you.
Okay. Justin Scanion?
So, the question is, what will we do to it? And I want to say, like, like what we were talking about, we have done things and we have had clear success in our, like, policies. Kindergarten, 72 students, now, that is a lot. And, like, we hit the limit. We're going to build in our classroom, we're going to add more, hopefully. And we lose a lot of students from high school that go to private schools, and using our advertisements, like, Person, we were able to, it was done a fabulous job, fantastic. She, like, was able to, like, we're able to hold on to more students. Now, and we, we've also been attracting students from Jamestown, from South Kingston. Students are interested in very specific programs, either agriculture, computer science. So, we have done these things, and we have, they've borne fruit so far. It's really just, so, we understand that we're not going to, these are numbers we have to fight, because they're across the board, they're all South County, they're a lot of the country, it's just, yeah. But we're fighting them, and we're winning.
Okay. The next question is directed to Alexander Menzies and Diane Nobles. Different school districts have different requirements for high school graduation. Narragansett requires a senior project. Do you think this is a good requirement, and/or do you think other requirements should be instituted? Please be specific if you are suggesting additional graduation requirements or alternatives, and if not, please explain why the senior project is a sufficient measure of proficiency expected of a high school graduate?
Oh, I love this question, because I had a senior project myself. While I was in school, there was immediate frustration from a lot of my peers, and I heard a lot of parents complaining about how much extra work was involved, and I even know students who chose not to go to Narragansett just to avoid doing the senior project. But I have to say that they made a big mistake, because when I went to college and I explained my experiences and how rewarding they were, they all wished that they had the senior project. Because you write a, you learn how to write a report throughout your whole senior year, you do a, you learn how to document the process, and you give a final presentation, and you acquire these incredible presentation skills that are very valuable for moving on to college and getting out into the real working world. So, I'm all in favor of the senior project as being required to graduate.
Okay. Diane Nobles?
I also am a proponent of the senior project, and I imagine, Alex, that you were probably one of the first classes to, to be required.
That is correct.
And I think the process, if you went back and looked at it today, in this, in the subsequent years, that the process has really been improved with each year. I've been a judge for the senior project for each of the years, and every year, the projects become better and better. Better research, better presentations, better knowledge base for the students, and it really brings together the skills and the knowledges that they've learned over their four years at Narragansett High School.
Okay. Rebecca Durkin?
Yeah, I'm just going to piggyback on Diane as well, and also Alex. I've had, as I mentioned, so far I had two children that have had completed the senior projects, and I have a junior currently, and I was on the Narragansett High School PTO when they first started doing the senior projects. And I have seen the continuation and the improvement of how the students have handled it, as well as the faculty, and it's, it's to the point now where the students are actually excited about doing their senior project. They're talking about the senior projects in their freshman year, and thinking about what it is they want to do, because they, they've seen all the amazing things that have come out of their previous students' projects, and the freedom and the creativity that has happened with these senior projects is amazing.
Okay. We're going to now switch to the lightning round, and we'll do five questions which require just a yes/no answer, and everybody will answer, and you will get 10 seconds to- And everybody will answer and you will get 10 seconds to elaborate if you want to elaborate beyond a yes/no. And I will begin with Diane Nobles. And then the next question, I'll begin with Rebecca and we'll just rotate around. So the first yes/no question is, Narragansett has revamped the school guidance system so that students will have the same counselor over the four years of high school. Would you support student and parent surveys about satisfaction with the new guidance procedures and their recommendations for any changes?
Yes, absolutely. Parent input is very important. We want their feedback.
Rebecca?
Yes, I do support the survey.
Yes, and we've surveyed a lot and we'll survey for this too. Yeah.
Alexander?
Yes, I agree. Parents especially know what's going on at homes when guidance counselors don't necessarily know all the time. And I'm all in favor of a survey.
Yes, I agree. That's how you make things better. You always want to get feedback, reflect on it, and then make things better.
Okay, now we'll start with Rebecca Durkin on this question. If elected, will you vote to support a resolution in favor of the Safe Schools Act, which would ban all guns, including concealed carry guns in schools, except for active law enforcement personnel?
Yes, I would.
Yes, I would.
Yes, absolutely.
And yes, for me as well.
And I make it unanimous, yes.
Okay, all right. So this begins with Justin Skenian. Do you support an annual cost of living increase for Narragansett teachers?
Yes, I do. I think that's a necessary part of any contract.
Yes, I agree.
I'm going to say do a qualifying yes because I would never project into the future that, yes, we have to always do a raise. But it's important through negotiations that, you know, that's considered. So a qualified yes.
Yes, I'm also a qualified yes. I do think cost of living and inflation should be factored into the negotiation process. And we did that this year with our negotiations with our teachers' union and our support staff union.
I agree.
All right, so this begins with Alexander. Narragansett's per pupil cost is about $17,500, which is higher than the surrounding towns. Do you think this cost is too high?
No, I think it's really important that we spend the money in order to allow these kids to move on from our school system and move on to other greater opportunities.
So no, I don't think it's too high. I think it's appropriate. And we have room, we have capacity in our schools that as we increase enrollment, the per pupil will come down.
Yes, I was going to make that same point that Tammy just made. It's really a mathematical formula situation. And I think we try very hard to keep our costs fair to our taxpayers.
Rebecca?
I agree that it's very high. I would like to find ways to make it lower, but I haven't figured that one out yet.
Yeah. So the cost per pupil is really factored on how many pupils we have. And as we mentioned earlier, we have a decreasing birth rate population, we have a decreasing student population. And we're using techniques to get students in there. That's going to lower that when time comes. Like, it's just a misnomer that this is a sole factor for judging how well schools are spending their money.
All right, so now this is directed to Tammy. This is the final one in this round. Do you believe the Narragansett schools' policies on bullying, including cyberbullying and enforcement of those policies, are working?
I think, yes, I think they're working, but we always have to keep looking at that. We've rewritten the policies, the policies are in place. We have to be proactive with how we are educating and supporting students.
Yes, as Tammy said, we've just strengthened those policies in recent years. And it's very important that the school community know what is in those policies and that they are strengthened. And I do support our policy in terms of bullying.
Rebecca?
Yes, Diane and I both serve on the policy committee. And so we did rework those recently. And we feel that they've been strengthened, but they can always be looked at again.
Justin?
Yes, and just to pay back on everyone else, just constant vigilance, constant retraining, constant like reworking and making sure like we match what's needed.
Alexander?
Yes, I agree that they're working, but there's always room for improvement. If bullying exists, unfortunately, it does. It can always be worked on and addressed, so.
Okay, all right. So now we're going to go back to the longer answer questions. So we're seven? Okay, so are this, okay. Okay, all right. This question is going to be addressed to Rebecca Durkin, Justin Skenian and Diane Nobles. In 2016, the Journal of School Health examined 38 reports studying the association between school start times, sleep and other outcomes, such as attendance, among adolescent students. They reported that later start times generally corresponded to improved attendance, less tardiness, less falling asleep in class, better grades and fewer motor vehicle crashes. The American Academy of Pediatrics has recommended a start time of 8:30 a.m. or later for middle school and high school students. What is your opinion about a later start time for the middle school and for the high school? Please consider positives of such a change as well as challenges in your response. So Rebecca Durkin?
Thank you. So one of our subcommittees on our Health and Wellness Committee is the school start time change. And it has been something that we're looking at very closely. It is a very complex issue. It was actually one of the things that I ran on two years ago because I was very interested and concerned about the data that has come forth as a parent. So it was one of my main agenda items. As I've gotten into it, I'm realizing it's so much more complex than just snapping your fingers and making the change. Everyone agrees the change is important. It's how do we get there that is the challenge. So right now, we have a subgroup. We will be working on creating a survey for the stakeholders in the community. That's our next step. But really, it comes down to figuring out how to work the bus situation and understand the cost involved.
Okay, Justin? Skenian?
So I'm all for the later start times. I think it's clearly evident that students need to sleep more and this is a good way to encourage it. They're consuming gotten amounts of caffeine, they're unhealthy and a bunch of other stuff. And it's a very simple concept. If they're tired, they should sleep, like, no one should, that's not confusing. But buses are a big factor. After-school programs being delayed is huge. And you've got to make sure everyone's kind of on board with this, other communities too. And Diane's working with that. And it's a complicated issue that we are working on. And I think the studies are there, the will is there. And now we've just got to figure out the how-to. And this is a big change to the school system. I don't think since the gas crisis have schools, like across the board, has time been changed in that regard.
Okay, Diane Nobles?
Well, as Becky said, Subcommittee is researching this now. And I'm going to be very interested in what their findings are. I do understand, you know, that teenagers need adequate sleep. I think that perhaps adjusting the bedtime as opposed to changing the start time might be an option to explore. But I'm open-minded to it until I hear the results of the committee.
Okay, so the next question will go to Tammy McNeese and Alexander Menzies. One of the selling points for the new athletic fields was that regional sports events would be held there. Further, the proceeds from such events were to help cover the expense for the upkeep of the facility. Is this happening? And if so, how much revenue is being generated? And what percentage of the maintenance costs are covered? If not, explain why.
So if anyone is at Narragansett High School in the fall and the spring, they will see that the athletic complex is being used on a daily basis. There are football games, there are soccer games, there are lacrosse games, there are track and field meets. For the first time in probably 20 years, we're able to host home meets for middle school students, for high school students. We are able to have very large invitationals there. And for the past two years, we've had the middle school state championship track meet there, where there have been 53 schools from across the state that are coming and using Narragansett High School. And these are sixth, seventh and eighth graders that, you know, may be interested in tuitioning in and joining Narragansett High School. So the athletic complex is getting extensive use. And even in the summer, there's outside organizations that rent it and pay a rental fee. It's been such a wonderful asset to our community because when you have 50 different schools coming in and then they're going out to dinner in our restaurants and everything, it's been a wonderful addition to our community. Thank you.
Yeah, okay, Alexander?
I agree with everything she just said. It's getting a lot of use and it's really nice to see. You go by there any weekday, weekend, you always see it's being used. We have lights now, which is always exciting. As far as the maintenance being covered, it is being covered under the budget. And the reality of it is since with the turf, the cost of maintaining it has gone down maybe years down the road. We'll have to put a lot of effort into maintaining it or redoing it. But as of right now, you're looking at a lot of money being saved as far as maintaining it. I'm all in favor of hosting more of these big track meets and other major athletic events at the facility. And it's really nice to see it getting used because I think it really brings in the families to our district. And it is a real appeal for a lot of people who have students that want to get involved in the athletics in our schools.
All right. The next questions are going to be addressed to Rebecca Durkin, Tammy McNeese and Alexander Menzies. In response to the Parkland shooting and other school shootings, Narragansett hired an additional police officer to be the second armed resource officer for the school system. Please explain why or why not you believe sufficient measures have been taken to ensure school safety? So Rebecca? Durkin?
Thank you. As we had mentioned before in a previous question, we all agree that the school safety of our children and our teachers and our administrators is of utmost importance. The hiring of the school, the extra school safety person, we felt was very important. And we have other programs that we put in place. I was just at the Alice training last week. And it was actually hard to sit through, but the police gave an unbelievable presentation as to what you're supposed to do if something like this happens. And so we're vigilant in keeping our community safe in our schools.
Tammy McNeese?
So there's really four big areas that go along with school security. And we've been talking about that a lot tonight. One is, you know, being proactive in making sure that all the students in our building feel connected to adults and really increasing our mental health supports and awareness on that. You have to look at the facility itself. We have budgeted a significant amount of money over the upcoming years on the actual school facility itself with entrances and exits, with swipe badges for teachers, protective window films on the windows, the addition of a second school resource officer. And then the training for our teachers. You've heard tonight, we keep talking about this Alice training. It's a new kind of active shooter protocol that we've been working with the Narragansett Police Department. So it's really a four-pronged approach. And our superintendent has worked very closely with our town manager. People that are familiar with him know that he has an extensive, you know, background and expertise in that area. And we've been partnering, you know, with our town. Narragansett Police Department has been outstanding. And it's been a great partnership with the town. Thank you.
I think school safety is of the utmost importance. And I don't think anyone sitting up here would think otherwise or disagree with that point. No student should ever have to go to school feeling unsafe. By any means, we are looking into however we can to update the safety and the security measures at the Narragansett schools. They just, the committee just approved this new lock system and the swipe badges. And I would be really interested in hearing the feedback from a lot of the administrators in the schools to see how that's going. And to hear that they have this Alice training going on is, it should be reassuring to know that this committee and the administrators are doing what is necessary. And they are taking these steps and these precautions very seriously to make sure that all students, teachers and faculty are safe at, when they go every day.
Okay. So the next question will be addressed to Diane Noble and Justin Skenian. What is your position on introducing early learning of a foreign language as in immersion classes? And specifically, do you support the middle school offering more foreign languages in addition to Spanish? Please explain why or why not.
Well, we have been offering more foreign language, starting in kindergarten and right up through the high school. And I think it's good for students to have exposure to learning a foreign language and also learning about the culture of the countries that they're learning the language of. So yes, I do support foreign language instruction. And I'd also like to see Latin come back.
Who was the, oh, and Justin?
Yeah, not only do I support it, when I've been, as I've been on the committee, I've worked hard, we've worked hard as a committee to encourage it. When they're young, this is the prime age where they can learn a second language easier than, you know, anyone else can. That's what, and they can just absorb it. It's quite amazing. So yes, I encourage it and we work towards it. And we've had success so far, so yes.
Okay. Oh, sure, Alexander?
I'm also very in favor of learning an additional language and offering up these other opportunities at a younger age. Because the reality is when, you know, not everyone speaks English. I have found that when you're traveling abroad. But it's also really admirable, and admirable, I should say, in the workforce if you know more than one language. And it's also a requirement when you go to many colleges to take an additional foreign language. So I think it can only benefit our students if we look into learning more than one language. I welcome any opportunities or offers as to what kind of languages we could offer.
Yeah, okay. We're going to go back to do the lightning round question. And this time, we'll start with Tammy McNeese and go the other way around. Okay. Do you think there are sufficient number of school psychologists and social workers in the schools to deal with mental health and behavior problems?
So I'm going to say we can always use more. I think right now, it's adequate. But I would love to see that increase because the emotional needs of students are increased. So I'd like to see it increase. It's adequate right now, but I'd like to see it increased.
Okay, Alexander?
Yes, I agree. I also would like to see it increase. I believe that the more people we have to provide input and assistance is better.
Okay, Justin?
We do a good job of treating our schools with psychologists. We have a counselor in every school, which is really hard for districts to do. So I'm very proud of that. And if we end up looking at the future and need more people to help, we'll fund those options immediately or soon as we can.
Rebecca?
I think more importantly is embedding social, emotional learning in the classrooms themselves. So it's not something that they just have to leave the classroom in order to learn the skills necessary in order to be able to control their, well, help them with their anxiety and their disorders that might happen by being stressed out as a kid.
Okay, Diane?
I think at this time, we're adequately staffed in all three of our schools.
Okay, so this will start with Alexander. Do you support the $250 million state bond for school construction?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes, I do. Some of these schools, schools are all funded off of property values. And given the rate recession we've seen, schools and given the rate recession we've seen, schools, certain districts take, like, unprecedented levels. We've kept up with our buildings. Our districts have not been so fortunate, and without maintenance, they've fallen in such a deep hole that this bond is necessary to dig them out of it.
Rebecca?
Definitely.
Diane?
Yes.
Okay, Tammy?
It's a reluctant yes. I agree with Justin because out of that bond, Narragansett is going to receive a very small amount of that, and all of our taxes are going to go up. So it's a necessary thing due to poor planning, so.
Dollar saved, dollar earned, they just...
Okay, we'll start with Justin Scanion on this one. In order for a student to be ready and prepared for learning at the beginning of each new school term, some states use a longer school year, with just weeks, not months, between each term. Would you support this type of schedule in Narragansett?
No. Look, some places have done this to certain degrees of success, but other places which do have it, like, I think China's a good example, we've seen more success in our school system on average than theirs. So, you know, there's pros and cons.
Rebecca?
I haven't done the research to be able to answer that question.
Okay, Diane?
I don't think that year-round school would be a good fit for our community, being a major tourist destination in the summer, and so many of our students are working in various restaurants and businesses. So I don't think it would be a good fit for our community.
Okay, Tammy?
No, I don't support that. We don't have three fully air-conditioned buildings, and unless this was a whole statewide movement, I think this would be a disaster.
Alexander?
No, I wouldn't be in favor of it. We're trying to draw students and families into our school system, not run away. I, I'm not.
Okay, Rebecca. Are Narragansett students adequately prepared in STEM fields to be competitive applicants to college?
Yes, they are. My, both of my sons went into engineering, so I, I say yes from a personal perspective, but I've seen others, and I think that we do a great job.
Diane?
Yes, I agree with Becky. We, we're doing a very fine job in that area, and, and also STEAM, along with STEM.
Okay. Tammy?
I think we're adequately preparing our students, but we always have to look for ways to improve that, and especially to look at our subpopulations, to have more female students involved in that area, minorities, expand our, our offerings. But it's adequate for sure.
Alexander?
I agree that it's adequate, and I'm always open to exploring new ideas and opportunities that can make it more attractive and appealing for people to come in and use those sources.
Justin?
Yes, I do. I think the proof is we have people tuitioning in to join some of our STEM programs. And also with their success in going to college and getting accepted and, yeah.
Okay, all right, so, so we start with Diane on this one. Do you think the Narragansett school system's required curriculum adequately teaches civics and produces voters who understand the major tenets of our democracy and how the U.S. government works?
Yes.
Okay, Tammy?
Yep, I agree. We have a strong civics class that all kids have to take, and we are just sending another group of finalists down to Washington, D.C., that, that won a contest in this area.
Yes, I loved it so much, I decided to go into political science, and now I'm here today. So, I, I really enjoyed it, and I think it's doing an adequate, really great job.
Justin?
Yes, in line of our, we, we wrote a mission statement where this was, one of our points was, we want civic, like, engagement, like, for the students. And I think nowhere does, we do a good job. We, we've accomplished, we're aiming for that goal, and we've hit it. I mean, obviously, continuing everything, it's always a journey, it's never, yeah.
Rebecca?
Yes, I think we're doing a good job. We can always do better, but I, I think the teachers at the high school that are teaching these classes are amazing.
Okay, so, we will, no, we're going to go to closing statements. Okay, yeah. We will now have closing statements in the order in which the candidates are seated, so we will start with Diane Nobles. And you have one minute for a closing statement.
Okay, thank you. My thanks to the League of Women Voters for sponsoring our forum tonight. My reason for wanting to serve on the Narragansett School Committee is simple, straightforward, and it doesn't change. And that is to ensure that every student crossing the stage to receive a Narragansett High School diploma has the knowledge, skills, and abilities to be successful at the next step, be that college, career, the military, a gap year, or some combination thereof. My thanks to the voters of Narragansett for giving me the opportunity to serve on our school committee. I consider it a privilege, and I view it as community service or public service. And it's only on the first Tuesday after the first Monday in November of every other year that I think of it as a political position. So I would appreciate your support so I can continue working with my colleagues as we strive to make our Narragansett schools the very best that they can be. Thank you.
Rebecca Durkin? Thank you to the League of Women Voters for organizing this night. And I'd just like to read the, the Narragansett School District mission statement. The Narragansett school system will enable every student to develop the knowledge, skills, and habits of mind necessary to be a lifelong learner and productive citizen through systems which establish rigorous academic expectations, support caring, healthy, and safe environment, and create personalized, innovative, and engaging learning experiences. Over the last two years, I've had the privilege to be part of this amazing school system, along with our new superintendent, my fellow committee members, the dedicated teachers, administrators, all of the various stakeholders, and of course, our students. We strive for continuous improvement. I hope to be able to pursue this path of promoting and achieving the district's missions, goals, and values, along with understanding the need for fiscal responsibility.
Thank you. Justin Scanion?
Thank you. So first off, thank everyone for coming. Thank you for people who are going to watch this at home or in future. Just participating in democracy, I always feel, is just such an important part. We, unprecedented in human history, the ability to choose your own fates. And I've always viewed education as the greatest tool. I think I referred to it earlier as Magic McGuffin, to like, like, to help so many people. And I'm heart, we have one of the greatest school districts in the state in Narragansett. I'm happy to serve for the last two years to help that and be part of this. It really has been an honor. And I just hope you would come out and vote for me. I'm last on the ballot. The election's November sixth. My name is Justin Scanion, and thank you.
Alexander Menzies?
My sincere thanks to the League of Women's Voters, my family, and all of you for attending tonight's debate. It has been an honor. This was my first time doing this. It is my hope that every student who leaves the Narragansett school system will be prepared for life outside of the classroom. I have a younger brother sitting in the audience who is currently attending the high school and is actively searching for colleges and preparing for life outside of school. I, along with my twin brother, who is also in the audience, enjoyed growing up in the school system. We made lifelong friends with other students and teachers. It is my hope that I can continue to ensure that the Narragansett schools are receiving adequate funding, and that every student who leaves the Narragansett school system is ready to embrace every opportunity. I am who I am today because of what I learned in Narragansett. I love this community, and I am thankful for my education. If you want someone who attended the elementary school, someone who attended the peer school, someone who attended and graduated from the high school, then I respectfully ask for your vote on November sixth. Thank you.
Tammy McNeese?
I'm going to start with a bunch of thank yous. So thank you to the League for hosting us. And I, I want to thank my school committee colleagues. I've been serving on the school committee as the chair for ten years, and I really value and appreciate the relationship that we have. I think we have a very high-functioning school committee. I want to thank Dr. Peter Cummings, he, for his leadership. And I want to thank our current town council. For the past two years, they've worked collaboratively, collaboratively with us and supported our full-budget appropriation for the past two years. I know firsthand how amazing our schools are. I already said that both of my children went through all three schools. I'm very proud to serve on the Narragansett School Committee. I enjoy the work. I hope that I bring value to the committee, and it would be an honor to serve again another term. I think we, we have to continue to focus on all the goals and initiatives in our district's strategic plan. I think we have to continue to foster a healthy relationship with our town council, as it has been for the past two years. And I would look forward to another, serving another two-year term. Thank you.
Great. Well, that's it. Thank you to the candidates.
Thank you.
And thank you to those attending here on Narragansett Town Hall and to our viewers on public access television. Please stay tuned. Those of you who are watching or in the audience for the town council forum, which will be coming up at eight o'clock. Also, please attend the Meet the Candidates night for South Kingstown School Committee and Town Council, which is next Wednesday, October tenth, and the Meet the Candidates for the State and House Legislators Representing Narragansett in South Kingstown on Wednesday, October twenty-fourth. All events will be here at Narragansett Town Hall, starting at six-thirty. This forum will be rebroadcast on Cox Channel Seventeen and Verizon Channel Twenty-eight frequently between now and Election Day. There is a rebroadcast schedule on the table at the back of the room and on the League of Women Voters website at www.lwvri r i s c dot org. And stay tuned for the town council forum at eight. Also, anyone here in the audience, we'd appreciate it if you fill out the survey that's either been handed to you or is on the table or the chairs. So once again, thank you all so much.